Our city staff and all of our first responders that keep us, keep us safe. Be with us as planning commission members that we will do what is right for our community. These things we ask and donate. Amen.
Amen. Next on the agenda, Zach, will you do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Walther?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Kerr?
Here.
Longmire?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Here.
I believe, I think Mr. Evans, didn't he, did he step out?
No, he, he's not here.
He's not here, okay.
If he, if he does arrive later, we'll just recognize.
Yes, sir.
And note that.
So that's eight present right now currently.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment, agenda items only, and we don't have anybody signed up, so we will skip that and move on. Next that we have is the acceptance of the agenda. So, any, all right, we have a motion, and I heard a second down here. All, everybody for, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody against? None? We'll move forward. All right, next on the agenda, the minutes from last month, March 4th, 2025. I take everybody's had time to read it and saw it. All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Vanessa. Second, I'd heard somebody down here. All right, Wendy Slattery, thank you. Next thing, we have to vote on it. So, everybody that's for it, please say aye.
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 Everybody against?
Abstained.
One abstention, two abstentions? Okay, one was not here. Mr. Kerr knew he wasn't here, and then Ms. Longmire, she was not here. All right, Zach, we good with everything? All right, tell me if I'm moving too fast, this is a light agenda. All right, next thing is the site plan for Valvoline Mayfair site, or Valvoline Mayfair Site Plan. Okay, owner is D3 Hendersonville M LLC, location 258 East Main Street, parcel 159 JA 021.08. Timothy, this is yours, so will you take this, explain it, tell us what you want to tell us about it?
Sure, thank you.
And the people from Valvoline, after he speaks, we'll ask y'all to come up if you have anything to add. Okay? Thank you.
This lot is, is west of City Hall here, it's between Pinnacle Bank and the future Jim and Nick's. It is Joan G C, General Commercial Plan Development, being part of the Mayfair Plan Development, which also includes Chick-fil-A and Jim and Nick's and Office Depot and N T B. The site is .7, .7 acres, the building is a 2,088 square foot oil change facility that use is allowed in this plant development. Access to the site will be off of the rear, which also will feed Jim and Nick's and Chick-fil-A. Seven parking spaces are required, and they are providing 17. They are requesting a waiver. They have overhead doors that are facing the street that runs between it and Pinnacle Bank. Because this is a corner lot, if you have vehicular access and pull through on both sides of the building, obviously those overhead doors, doors will have to face one street or the other. So they're requesting a waiver for that. They have beefed up the landscaping on that side, provided extra landscaping and a, and a landscape wall to sort of, to help screen those doors. And they have agreed to all staff comments.
All right, thank you. Representative from Valvoline, you have anything to add, you'd like to talk to, say, convince us?
Hopefully I don't have to do that, since we're all good. But no, I'm Luke Clausen, I'm the project manager with the engineering firm for this. I don't have anything to add unless you guys have any questions for me.
Anybody from the planning commission have questions of Timothy or Valvoline?
I got one question. The streak between this site and Pinnacle, is that a private drive or is it a public
It will be private from the rear access road back towards floor and decor. I believe the front part of that is, is public.
Okay. No, it didn't have a street name listed on it, so I was just curious.
And it, it's, it's kind of a unique situation, because the city now has ownership of all that property with the Bradford Berry House, so we have ownership of that street as well. So, it's kind of one of those things, the city owns it, and therefore it's public, and it's, currently it's not restricted, you know, even beyond the point of this development. So we would, we would consider that public. Do you, do you agree with that, Stephen? Maybe just check with the city engineer.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay. Anybody else from the planning commission? Any other questions, anybody? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you lighting. Go ahead, Vanessa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thank you for expanding your business here in Hendersonville, we do appreciate that very much. Just a quick question, and maybe this is from Mr. Witten, or I guess you all could answer it as well. Where is the exact location of the landscaping wall you're proposing to build? It says the east side, but where, where exactly?
So if you see, based on that picture right there, it's right below the trees that are on the top side of that picture. So you see that block that's running?
Right there.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
That's the wall, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's great, so it'll be, it'll be really long, that'll be, that'll be very good. And, and just another follow-up question, and this is only because we, this is going to be a pretty busy area, and I think everybody's, not everybody, but some folks are a little concerned still about traffic. Could you all just walk us through the traffic pattern plan for this, for your drive-through area there? Thank you.
I'll let Mike speak to that.
So my name's Michael Leverton, I'm the project manager for Valvoline out of the corporate office in Kentucky. And, so our operation, you know, runs similar to other competitors, such as Take Five and Express, to where, you know, service for an oil change only, takes just under 15 minutes. And, you know, for a store like this, we do expect it to be a higher volume store to where we do, you know, maybe an average of 60 to 70 oil changes per day with, you know, peak hours, maybe having 12 to 15 oil changes in the hour, you know, whether that's lunchtime or, you know, right before, you know, 5 o'clock getting off of work, or, or things of that nature. So, during, during those two times, you know, that's the real busy time to where, you know, we'll expect to actually have, you know, two vehicles in the stacking queue behind the bays. But other than that, I mean, our, our traffic's pretty light compared to, you know, any other retail, and the parking is mainly for employees. There's no, you know, overnight parking for vehicles that are, you know, going to get first in line to get service the next day, or they're going to come back a week later or anything like that.
Okay, I happened to notice there on the, on the parking lot, there is a section that said, "Do not enter," so I'm, that's kind of what I'm asking, like, if you could kind of walk us through, like, how you would pull in, and then where you would pull out, and how all that will flow a little bit.
I'll let you go back. Yeah. So if you look at the site plan on the eastern side, that is a one-way entrance to get into the entrance of the bays, and then it's a do not enter to get to that other side. And so, if you were going to enter the site, if you're entering as a parking customer, you would come through, and you'd be able to go on the south side entrance, and that's full access there, even all the way around, you just can't get in from the, I guess that's eastern side entrance into that other part. That's just for access to the bays.
Got it, okay. All right, thank you. So, you know, in the event that there would be stacking around, they would kind of stack up there, and they wouldn't necessarily get out of that private drive or where the Chick-fil-A entrance might be.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, thank you for being here, and, and I will echo Commissioner Silkwood's comments. Thank you for being interested in Hendersonville and making an investment. I have some concerns, I think waivers are an abuse of our, our zoning, and I appreciate that you're trying to make a very desirable piece of property, work for your business, but we have zoning for a reason, we have restrictions for a reason, and specifically, I think about, and I'll address this to my, my committee peers, we speak constantly of the west side of Main Street, and we went through the whole exercise of the dockside redevelopment plan, and thinking about trying to minimize the over, and this, this is my opinion, trying to minimize the overly congested automotive industry feel of Main Street coming into Hendersonville. And then to see this drop into the middle of an area that is seeing a lot of interest and a lot of development, and it to be not only another automotive-related business, but now to be asking for waivers, and to have not just two, but three large overhead doors that you're trying to mask. So I would like to understand a little more specifically about the landscaping. It is obvious that you are designing much more than a business would probably typically have in their plan. But I also think black-eyed Susans don't present a lot of, of shielding. The black-eyed Susans I know are about this high, and you're talking about three overhead doors. So those are not really, they break up the look, but they certainly are not shielding traffic from the view of that. So as you're coming from the Gallatin side of our community and moving through Hendersonville, which a lot of our commuters do, they would still be looking at three overhead doors, correct? So of the other plantings there, and, and I'll share with you before I, I let you respond, trees are great, but unless they're deciduous, they're, they're only going to be great from about four weeks after our allergies start until about the middle of November. So talk to me a little bit about your thought process, what you agreed to with the city, with the landscape plan, and how that is going to truly mitigate the look of three large overhead doors facing not just a street, but being visible from that street and Main Street as you're coming through the heart of Hendersonville.
Yes, ma'am. So, first and foremost, this landscape plan you're looking at, we're currently working with staff to kind of update it to be a little more. So like, what you're talking about, the black-eyed Susans, we're actually talking about doing arborvitus there now, and we're going to put them in, instead of doing six to 10, they're going to be eight to 12, stuff like that. So, we're working with staff to kind of get the things in place to really shield these as much as possible. And then, it's not shown on this plan, but on the south side of this site, we don't have any screening between the Jim and Nick's and our bays, but we're working with staff to add some as well there. Just, I know, like, as you're driving to the north, you'll be able to see it, but with that angle and more arborvitus right there, more screening will help kind of shield that a little bit more. And then the other part about that, too, is like, I think there's a degree of screening you can do, but you'll never fully screen them. I don't think that'd be possible without building a massive wall that no one wants to see. So that's why we're putting in really high-quality bay doors to kind of mitigate that a little bit. But, the main point that we're trying to put across is just, we'll put more and more landscaping to kind of help alleviate that concern as much as possible.
Thank you, yeah, arborvitus, the, the best shielding screen that God ever invented.
Yes, ma'am. And I will follow up on that, just confirm, we, we are, have been working with Luke to, to beef up that landscaping beyond what's just shown here. That is in process to, to add evergreens and taller evergreens to help do that.
And just one, thank you for that. One follow-up question with the overhead doors, I, those look pretty to me, I'm, I'll take you at your word, that those are upgraded, prettier overhead doors. Is Valvoline's policy that when a car pulls in, the doors close during the oil change, or are those doors open from the time the guys come and unlock until they're done at the end of the day?
So, that is typically weather-dependent, and if the conditions are extreme, you know, whether rain, cold, or whatnot, or, you know, and certain jurisdictions where it is mandatory to have the bay door shut when vehicle's being worked on, then, you know, we do enforce that and follow that. So, I mean, those are kind of the guidelines that, that we use. I mean, it really, you know, more for the, the customer and the employee's sake, if, you know, the weather conditions are not optimal, then, you know, it's pretty much a guarantee that they're going to be shut. But if it's, you know, a nice day outside like today, then they would likely be open just to keep air circulating through.
And I, I appreciate that for the employee's sake, but at that point, the beauty of the overhead doors only comes into play in off-hours, when your business is closed, correct? Otherwise, they're predominantly, we live in a fairly, you would not know it over the last seven days or the upcoming five, but we live in a fairly gentle climate, hot, gets a little cool, so they're going to be open probably most of the time, would be a fair assumption.
Yeah, I'd say it's, it's fair.
Okay, thank you, that was all I had, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone else from the commission? Any other comments, Timothy, that you have about the landscaping or anything?
Yes, sir.
I got one question about the doors. Do we have any ordinances or anything that says that the doors have to be closed when they're in there?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. All right. Question about the doors, if they have to be, if we have any rules or ordinances that say they have to be closed while they're working on the cars. So, there's not any official ones? All right. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion if anybody has one to offer.
I'll make a motion, we approve with all staff comments and granting them the waiver.
Do I have a second from Vanessa? All right, so now we'll have to do a roll call vote with the machines.
Motion to approve has passed with seven yeses and one no.
All right, thank you, Zachary, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. He recorded it. Thank you from Valvoline, we appreciate it. All right, next we have the staff-level projects that are pending, I'll leave that up to Mr. Free. Do you have any comments that you'd like to share with the rest of us?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. This, this month, we have staff-level projects that are pending, all the ones that we approved were at the last month, so as you can see, that is dwindling down, that several of those that had been on there a long time are, are gone, and we just have these few, few remaining, and all of these are moving forward. I can answer any questions anybody might have specific to any of those projects.
Just one question out of curiosity, how's the Hendersonville Football Stadium progressing? Looks like they're struggling with it.
Uh...
Did you have an update on that, Zach?
Yes, sir. So I have received communication with Mr. Don. He is working in the process to get us those plans, pretty much, pretty soon. So he is working with us, he is working on getting those plans in, and addressing any comments that we have made so far. So we should see that off of here and approved hopefully soon, concerning them addressing any comments that he might have.
Great.
Thank you, just curious, I keep seeing it every day. Okay, nothing else there, next we have the planning director comments, oops, sorry, Charles.
Oh, wait a minute, I didn't have, not a question on one of those, I just had a question about our infamous Subway from last month.
Yes, I, I will cover that on my director comment, I'll fix it, I'll do that. Glad you brought that up, though.
I'm just sad firstly to see broken tile not anywhere on the agenda.
Yeah, it had been on there, it had been on there for a while, yeah. It is broken no more.
Okay, so we have planning director comments, Mr. Free?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'll lead off with the, the Subway. So, the, the, the fine folks from Subway are not back before you, they worked with staff, and we did get a resolution that resolved that. The resolution, they're putting the material, the design that was originally approved, the, the actual color wasn't available, but we worked with them to get something close, but it's going to be the right pattern, and so it's going to look tremendously better. On that backside where they removed it, we worked with them, there was an issue with the, the cooling unit for that refrigeration back there, but we worked with them, that they're putting the wall back like, like we talked about last time, but on the backside, it kind of steps down, and then there's a place for a ladder, and on that very backside of the building that you don't really see, that then gives that ventilation. So, actually it all worked out, worked out pretty, pretty good. And then I, I will note as well, this wasn't something we discussed last time, but they did do quite a bit with their signage, working with Caitlin Shin, our planner, to do a, a better sign than what they initially were doing. So, I appreciate them stepping up to do that, and look forward to the completion of it. Look forward to going to Subway and getting a sandwich there. So, looks like it's going to be really nice. So that, that is the update on that. Also, just a couple of other things to note, we're continuing, we, we finished up our senior planner interviews last week for Grant's previous position, so we had some good folks to interview, and we're in the process of making, making offers at this time, so hopefully we'll, we'll have a good positive result on that. And also, just wanted to update you, if you're not aware, we're working with BOMA on the development impact fees, and we had a good work session with BOMA here just a couple weeks ago, and, and so, we're going to be moving forward, looking at making some adjustments to, to the original plan that was submitted, and so that, over the next couple of months, a lot of different things will happen with that. I think one thing, though, BOMA did want to do, have an opportunity for the public, to have a public meeting where people could come and, and, you know, voice their concerns or opinions about development impact fees. So, here at some point in time, we'll, we'll be having that, and in case of them are, our public information officer, will make sure to get that out to the public when that, when that happens. Also, I wanted to recognize, you know, we're very proud of Timothy Witten, our assistant planning director, he serves this community very well, and he, he got a designation and was recognized as employee of the quarter for the city, and it's a pretty big, pretty big deal, and it's just very well-deserved, and, you know, we really appreciate Timothy, and, you know, a lot of the things, you know, when people drive around, Timothy's been here for, how many years, 22? More than, more than, more than 20? So, you know, when you're driving around the community, and if, if you're anything like me, of course, I look at all the little things, but when me and, me and my wife Susan, when we're driving around, you know, we just, we love this community, I love how it feels. I love, when you're driving around, it's almost, you know, like you're on a vacation for lots of, lots of parts of the community, and it's just beautiful. And a lot of that detail on the buildings, on the landscaping, how it looks and feels at night, all of that, Timothy's had a big hand in that, and I really appreciate his diligence and his efforts. You know, not, not only to make, and continue to make our, 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 our community beautiful today, but it's going to be something that impacts this community for years to come, so I really appreciate you, Timothy, and I really enjoy working with you as well. And also, I just might want to note, because I've had a lot of questions about what all's going on over here with all the dirt and everything, and everybody sort of knows Chick-fil-A's happening over here behind us, but on the other side of the street, right next to, on the Burger King side of the street, next to the, the bank, the building that's going up right next to that, that's Fast-Pace Medical, and that's going up. Then there's a vacant lot in the middle that, there's not a, a particular business for that yet, I'm sure there will be shortly, that'll be coming before this body. To the left of that, that's where the Subway is, and then there's a Subway, yeah, I've got Subway on the mind, I'm, I am a little hungry.
You're hungry, yeah.
And, but it's, equally as good as Subway will be Starbucks right there, and then on this side, the Bradford Berry, City Hall side, right here behind us, you've got the Chick-fil-A, and then in the middle will be Jim and Nick's Barbecue, and then right next to it will be the Valvoline, it won't be a Subway, but it'll be Valvoline that was, that was approved here tonight. So, a lot of activity going on here, some very, very exciting, exciting things going on. And that's just everything that I had, Mr. Chairman. I will recognize Alderman Mark Evans from Ward 6, my ward, and great ward, and I know you have attended several of our recent meetings, and just appreciate your interest in attending these meetings, and always good when Alderman, we always, you know, we have Michael that's here as an Alderman representative and a planning commissioner, but it's always good to have, have BOMA members here as well. So, that's everything that I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Hasty, you have something to add?
I still got some questions of the staff.
I'm sorry, yes, and when, I can open up to questions. So, that's good.
No, some time ago, we approved an additional expansion site plan for the Legacy Senior Living Center. Did they cancel it, or, you know, I, I had somebody ask me about it, but...
Is that over there by Jackson Town Homes?
Yeah.
You know what, I haven't heard anything, I haven't heard anything from that. I don't think we've heard anything from them for some time, so, you know, sometimes these things do take a while, but, you know what, we'll reach out to them and check to, to see where that is, but, no, I haven't heard any movement on that, but we did approve that.
Yeah, a lot of the projects, when we approve them, you know, normally within two, three months, you see activity.
Yes.
You know, and sometimes you don't, we approved a coffee shop up there by the Mexican Restaurant.
Yes.
That's been a long time ago.
Yes.
And nothing's ever happened to that, so...
And that, that deal, the Scooter's Coffee, that deal is gone, there's just some issues there with the improvements that needed to be made to that, I can't recall, Caldwell, Caldwell, right there, there need to be improvements to that, right there, and I think there were some issues over the cost, and that's kind of what, kind of, kind of did that deal in, so that one definitely is not moving forward.
I don't know whether it's possible or not, but then once we approve something, and it reaches a point where we know it's gone.
Yeah.
You know, just kind of tack it on the agenda and say, this one's, this one's gone.
Report back, yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely...
Something like that, so that...
We can definitely do that. I don't think there's a, I don't think there's another one right now that's kind of in that scooter, scooter range. Everything I think we've approved is still on track, Grace Place, that's still on track. TBN, I talked to them about three weeks ago, they're, they're, got two buildings they're going to be tearing down here any day, and they may be coming back, though, for some adjustment to their plan, but they're looking at maybe even more significant investment in addition to that residential, but some more investment on the technical production side of things as well. That's a good, good idea, we'll do that.
Mr. Wilson, you have something?
Yeah, I appreciate the update on TBN, I've been getting a lot of questions on that. The other project I was asked about is the one where they brought soil in into the FEMA zone, whatever happened with that?
Caldwell?
Yeah.
J R.
Uh, Stephen, did you, are you, I haven't heard, well... Yes, I, I think, I think something is moving forward with that. I don't think it's all complete, but I think they are closer to getting that issue resolved. So it's, things are moving forward, but I think the state's involved, and there's some different, different things going on, but I think they're working with the engineers to, to get that issue resolved.
Okay.
But at this point, I, I don't believe it's resolved at this point. Stephen may have some additional information.
Not really any particular additional information, but I understand that they are putting together the flood study to go along with it, so...
Okay, cool.
Yeah, good question.
It's been a little bit silent.
Okay.
Barry, I saw you next.
The, since we've brought up site plans that go on forever, is there a timeframe that you must develop, or you lose?
Yes.
What is that timeframe? Because we, we deal with a lot of subdivisions that were permitted 20 years ago, that we can't say no to, that we would never approve today.
Right.
So, clearly those are still hanging around, but I was just curious if there is a period of time that you must, once it's approved, you must build or you lose?
I think on site plans like Scooter's Coffee, or even a Subway has Subway, three...
Yeah, it's been a while on that one, too.
Yeah, three, three years.
Three years.
So, we used to do it where it was a year, and then you could extend it for two years, for a year at a time, up to three years, but the, I believe this, the state, the state statutes have that it is vested for that, for three years, and so that's why ours is three years. So, they have three years, and we do keep track of that on, when it gets out of date, and, and when it does, they just have to come back and go back through the whole process, and they lose their vesting.
Yeah.
But it's a little different with some of those residential things, really the, the plan unit developments, or, or the, uh, uh, plan development, commercial and residential, because that's really a rezoning, but the specific site plans, they do have a date that does expire.
Okay.
It gets a little bit more complicated when you have phasing, and it's a bigger project, commercial project, once you go ahead and get it substantially started... Once you go ahead and get it substantially started, then that does extend that vesting beyond that three years. So, that's a very good question as well. Can anybody top that question? That's a good one.
Just, I don't, I wouldn't even try to top various questions. The, the really aggressive conversations around the project on Sanders Ferry. It was going to be condos and apartments, and then they came back with the by-right plan for a elder care, nursing home, something. Do you have any update on where they are with that?
Let me let Timothy give the very latest on that, I don't know if I have the very latest on it.
So, they, they did get all the way through, of course, planning commission process, and post-planning commission got stamped, site plans, and, um, that's, as far as I know, that's, that's where it has ended. I think they were presuming getting a building permit. I don't believe that's been, they followed that to completion. Have not heard from them in quite a while.
All right. This has been an active question.
Yeah.
Anybody else got questions before we move on?
And we, and I will, I will say, we keep track of those things, and then we'll, we'll do a report when, when something rolls off, when it goes past that. Uh, but typically, we don't, um, this is fair to say, we do not reach out to the different developments to let, to inform them that, hey, you got a week, uh, before your, it's going to expire. Uh, because in some cases, it's a good opportunity for us to get a new look at it. Uh, or things have changed, and we don't allow that anymore. And so, I just wanted to share that, that we don't necessarily, uh, that's, that's on the applicant and the person that got approval to keep up with, with that information, if they want to, uh, maintain that vested right, uh, to what they're, what they're doing.
Thank you, Director. Well, the next thing on our agenda is the election of officers. So, is there any discussion?
I'll make the nominations if you want me to.
Well, you can make them, go right ahead.
I've nominated the officers for the last two years.
Okay.
I don't want anybody taking my job. Technically, we're only electing one officer, I think.
Yeah.
Our chairman is no longer here. So, I'm going to move that our vice chairman be moved up to chairman. So, now we got to elect a vice chairman. And I nominate Wendy Slater as the vice chairman. So, those will be the two officers that we would be voting on based on my nomination.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Anybody objecting to being an officer? No? All right, uh, do we have to do this by roll call, or do we do it by voice?
We could do voice, we could do voice.
Okay.
We'll do roll call, let's do roll call.
Roll call.
Yeah, just let's do that.
Okay. So- No, you vote.
It's okay to vote.
Yeah, it's okay to vote. All right.
Motion has passed with eight yeses.
All right, thank you very much. That was all done. All right, no other comments, no other-
I'll mention one other thing.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Free.
We will, we will be having, uh, we've got just, oh, I'm sorry.
We, uh, one thing I forgot to mention, uh, we will be having a meeting in May. Uh, we got something, one thing added on the agenda, uh, here today. Uh, and, uh, we will be meeting for that, uh, regular meeting, but we're also going to be meeting that third Tuesday, and we're going to have our work session for the changes to the zoning ordinance and maybe the subdivision regulations as well. And so, but I will, Zach will be reaching out to you to remind everybody, and once we have some materials for that work session, uh, we'll get, we'll get that to you probably at least a week, uh, before the work session. And, uh, so it should be, it should be a very interesting, uh, work session, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
When is the work session, the twentieth?
The twentieth, at six-thirty. And we'll, we'll probably have some, we'll have some food or something, uh, here that, that evening. Because it, we, we probably will be here for a few hours in that work session.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Free. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
All right, I have a motion with Wendy, and I heard a second with Charles. Everybody, uh, voice, voice, voice vote, please. So, all, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? It passes, y'all have a great night, thank you very much.